Good evening. I am going to call to order the March 24th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the Town of Hangham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass Gemra Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording this evening as well as recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is there anybody else?
Recording in progress.
Anybody online? Seeing none. Okay, so second item of business is approval of minutes. We have a few sets of minutes to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on March 10th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on March 13th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting with Advisory Committee held on March 13th, 2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So item three, this is the portion of the meeting where we've set aside 15 minutes to take questions or comments for things that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have something that you would like to be recognized for, please raise your hand and I will make the statement. Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is Superintendent's report.
Okay, terrific. Well, last week I was honored to spend the day with eight of our Metco students as we went into the State House for Metco Advocacy Day. Very grateful to Senator Patrick O'Connor, who gave our students a private tour of the Senate chambers, and our students did a terrific job of sharing their stories about Metco with our legislators. So again, thanks to all who represented. As previously shared, tomorrow night, we're looking forward to welcoming Dr. Christine Panarisi, who will serve as our new Executive Director of Student Services, beginning July 1st. Dr. Panarisi is eager to meet members of our community and will be hosting two opportunities for families to meet her. The first event is tomorrow evening, March 25th, and that will be a virtual event at 6:30 PM. The second event will be in person on Monday, March 31st, at 1:00 PM at the middle school. So thank you to CPAC for co-sponsoring these events. Hope that everyone will save the date for the upcoming HMS Drama production of Matilda, which will be performed on Thursday, April 3rd, and Friday, April 4th. This year, we are additionally offering a special preview of the production for all 4th graders in HPL. So this is a new offering this year, and so Grade 4 students will be bused to HMS during the school day on Tuesday, April 1st, at 10:00 AM for a special preview performance. So hopefully that will inspire some enthusiasm for our drama program and give our 4th graders a sneak peek of life at the middle school. Also wanted to acknowledge all in the community who supported the Hangham Harbor Women as they clinched the state tournament. TD Garden was packed, and we had the streets of Hangham were lined with people welcoming the girls back home to Hangham. So thanks to all who came to cheer on the team, both at the garden and here in Hangham.
Thank you very much. All right, moving over to item five, communications received by the Superintendent. 5.2, student communications.
Not much. Students were really excited to see the Harbor Women win though at the hockey game. That was really awesome. Being in the crowds is pretty surreal for see them go and win that.
Exciting. Yeah, and I think the Select Board's going to recognize them tomorrow as well. Yes, yeah, so it's exciting. All right, item 5.3, other communications. Does anybody on the committee have anything? Okay, all right. Moving over to item six, unfinished business. 6.1, to discuss a memorandum of agreement related to the nature trail at Plymouth River Elementary and act as appropriate. We had talked about this at the last meeting, but we needed to have a second read, so I will let Katie fill us in on that.
Yes, so just for any members of the community joining this evening, we did speak at our last meeting about a proposed memorandum of understanding between the Town of Hangham and the School Committee. So as you are aware, the town is in the process of considering construction of a new Center for Active Living at the site of Bear Cove Park Drive, which is on a parcel of land of approximately 5.5 acres. Given that that is on protected land, we will need to make essentially a swap of other protected land. So there is currently on the Plymouth River School Nature Trail, an equivalent parcel of land that includes some vernal pool areas, wetland, and so on, that we are very much in support of protecting in perpetuity. And so this swap of the land will enable the Center for Active Living to access that parcel in Bear Cove, and we will then be able to protect that portion of the nature trail in perpetuity.
Any questions, Dr. Pevens? Yeah? Great.
I will make a motion to approve, to enter into...
That's not between us, is it? It was between us.
Yeah. Retick. I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Hangham School Committee and the Select Board related to the nature trail at Plymouth River Elementary School.
Can I modify that motion? Sorry, just I'm not sure if the legal, I feel like legally there's a difference between, because this is a memorandum of understanding versus a memorandum of agreement. So I amend the motion to...
Okay.
Yep.
You're right.
Can I also second my amended motion? And I will do that as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, thank you. 6.2, to receive an update on the school roof and HVAC projects and act as appropriate. This has been a topic that is well-versed, I guess, at this point. So thank you for all of the work that you guys have done.
Absolutely, and thank you to not only this committee, but also the Advisory Committee and the Select Board for their support throughout this process. It has been a long process because it has necessitated dialogue between the various committees, and the MSBA process itself is a very cumbersome process. So combining our cumbersome warrant process with the cumbersome MSBA process, we have certainly had some rich discussions and lengthy discussions over the past several weeks, and we're looking forward to getting these projects to the finish line. So I'll turn this over to Ayesha Opont to share our latest updates.
So I think in terms of the roofs right now, I think we are exactly where we left off for the roofs, in terms of the fact that we will have three articles on the roofs. One for Plymouth River and one for South, which will include schematic designs for PRS and for South. And for the high school, it will also be schematic designs, but we schematic designs for the roof and for HVAC as well. So these three warrants will go through town meeting using the language prescribed by the MSBA, and the recommendation language will also be language prescribed, as prescribed by the MSBA as well. It may be a little bit different in terms of the warrant that you initially looked at, where the building committee would be the major change in that. Last week, the Select Board voted to include the 2017 Building Committee or any other committee that had been determined by town meeting. At our meeting on Wednesday of last week, the Building Committee meeting, the Building Committee members decided that they didn't want to do another like five or six years, or five years maybe, in terms of staying on that committee. So it does make sense to probably look at having another committee, because it means that the 2017 Building Committee, they are in favor of seeing the Foster project to the end. If it were that we had to get new members for that committee, it would mean that we would have one group of persons for that committee seeing Foster to the end, and another group of people within that same committee also starting the roofs and HVAC system. So it does make sense, given that information, to have two separate committees work on both the roof and the HVAC, separate to Foster and PRS schools. Any questions?
Any comments, questions?
No, I think just for folks who have been maybe paying attention to this part of, I think the issue is, besides all the complications of the MSBA process or on warrant process, timing, I think also a big part of this was the timing of the year, right, that we really, right, is that correct, Katie, that a lot of this had to do with the fact that in February, some heavy rains, some real bad, some bad ice buildup and stuff has really made this become more of, I think, a more tenuous situation than we thought before. So that sort of threw a wrench into this whole thing too.
Yeah, and I'd just like to, I mean, thank the 2017 Building Committee. I mean, I, that's, I mean, another five, six years is a lot.
I was willing, I was all voted.
So I just want to give a shout out to all of them for all their hard work, including Michelle, who's been on that committee as well.
You took the words right out of my mouth. It's a long time. And we will be providing more information to the community about the roof project and some of the other warrant articles in our principal newsletters, in our central office newsletters, because again, it has been a long drawn-out process and want to try to synthesize all the information for the community.
So do we need to re-vote, given we had?
No.
Okay, all right.
We're voting on this.
Going on. 6.3, to discuss a new body to oversee the upcoming school roof and HVAC products and act as appropriate. So an extension of the last discussion.
So in terms of that, the Advisory Committee last Thursday had mentioned a 2025 Building Committee. In terms of the 2017 Building Committee, there was prescriptive way layout of how the committee would be, what the committee would comprise of in terms of who would nominate or appoint different members of the committee, which MSBA had dictated before, because a building committee is not required by MSBA.
Or the accelerated.
For the accelerated program. MSBA came back to say that it doesn't matter to them as much. It doesn't matter to them at all in terms of how the composition of that committee is formed. I think Michelle, Jen can probably chime in if I'm wrong in any way, but it was that the School Committee had appointed two people for that committee. We also had two people appointed by the Select Board, and we also had another two people selected by, appointed by the, like, proposer, wisdom moderator, right? Because the MSBA is not determining the structure of the new committee, I don't know whether the Advisory has any specific recommendations, or even the School Committee has recommendations for how that committee should be structured, or how many people should be on that committee if you have an opinion about it. That may be something to discuss. But outside of that, I think everything else would be into the chain of command of like, who votes on it last, basically.
Yeah, they discussed, I think they went back and forth between five and seven.
Yep.
Call if they came to concur.
Right.
And I anticipate that they'll talk about that more.
Right. Yeah, but if it is that the School Committee has an opinion about it in terms of whether they should be five or seven, or who should appoint those members of the committee, it may be good to kind of say what that is now. So at least it could help inform the Advisory Committee's decision. That might be just one. In terms of, I think from our perspective, it is helpful if there are people who are from the community that are able to assist with the decision-making about the projects, given particularly where we have an HVAC project made that may be a little bit more complex than the normal projects that we have. But I guess the question really is whether we need seven people to be on that committee or whether five would be sufficient, and in terms of whether we can even find seven people to be on that committee as well.
If we keep referring to the current committee as the 2017 committee.
Right.
They're not selling it very well.
Yeah, well, we can even find seven people. And even if we did find the numbers, given that this project is not a whole school building, it's just really roofs and HVAC, and we will have an OPM for the project, and we will have designers who are also specialists in their own right. The question is, and Matt is also available as well in terms of his experience that he brings to the table, and he has done many of those projects as well too. So the question is, how many people do we need? Is any opinion of the School Committee on that? And do you want to be the ones to appoint who those people are, or do you want to leave it to the same three groups to appoint the members of that committee?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would say from my experience on the building committee, I think this is definitely a smaller committee. Mightn't be able to get away with three. I would say three to five people, just because on the, for the Foster building, I mean, it's a building and the decor, like, you know, we needed like a designer, we needed an architect, we needed an engineer. So we needed a lot of skill sets on there. I don't know what part of that I've failed, but other than I was a school committee representative, I knew all the schools. Know how many people would be in there. But so I...
Now an expert.
Yeah, now an expert, exactly. So I think like three to five would be the right number, and trying to think, would we, I don't know. I mean, I think we'd want to appoint at least one or two of the spots, but I'm also open to someone else probably knows more than we do about, you know, who might be the inappropriate person to volunteer to be on the committee.
Are you volunteering to him?
I don't, perfect.
I think the difference, I mean, talk about the difference between the two projects. I think one of the big differences with this project is that we're adding on to an existing building with a personality of its own, as opposed to building a new building from scratch. It might be good to have somebody who knows the personality and all of that of the current building, which I think probably some people, not necessarily us, but certainly people who work in the schools would have more of a sense of who really knows the quirks of the high school.
Right. One of the things that, even looking back at the MSBA as well, part of the committee for the MSBA, just kind of comparing that to what we're going into now, to give you some perspective, is that the MSBA had recommended, for example, for Foster, that the principal of the building be involved in that committee. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be the core, like, member, appointed member, but they would think that it would be part of the group that attends those meetings. The superintendent, the finance person as well. So those people would be there in terms of people who knew about the curriculum and the building itself and what the needs are as well. Kind of similar to what we did with PRS, where Greg was involved in that, and Matt Shuffley was also involved with that committee as well, and the superintendents have all been, as well as I have been, part of those committees as well too.
I would, I would...
As well as facilities, sorry, Carrie, yeah.
I would veer towards a smaller committee too. It's harder to recruit volunteers too, just from a practical perspective, and it's a less complicated project. And kind of to your point about the principals being involved, I think there's some flexibility with the committee too, to pull in non-voting members or resources from the community if it turns out we need help with, I don't know, advocacy with the state or, you know, some particular skill set that's not in the initial group. So I would go smaller. I know it's up to us, the Advisory Committee is going to make that decision, but, and I do think it would be important that we appoint at least one member, probably two, just because, you know, from the school perspective.
Yeah, I think, I mean, given that I'm assuming Ayesha, Katie, and Matt will be on it. Matt, me in, unless... Just want to clarify that. And then I think an additional, maybe, again, it is, as Carrie mentioned, this is Advisory's decision, but if they're looking for feedback from the School Committee, I would say another addition, and then three people on top of the three of you, maybe one Select Board, one Moderator, one School Committee. I wonder if Ayesha's even necessary.
I mean, I wouldn't mind.
Follow the 2017 Building Committee, and Matt could follow the new building.
I think it would be particularly helpful to have someone with a green lens, given that we're, you know, going for a more efficient HVAC system and so on. So I do think someone with that expertise might be helpful.
Okay. Great. All right. All right, so moving on to item 6.4. These are a bunch of policies that we talked about. We did a first read at our last meeting, and Carrie's going to take us through read number two.
Yeah, no, so, yeah, I know you, Ally went over all these in the last one. Let's start with the Title IX ones. So that's AC, ACAB, ACR, ACA, ACR, and ACGA and ACGB. So this is, as you know, the Biden administration had put in some regulations changing Title IX as far as how the investigations go and the protected classes and a number of those things. And then with the election, there was a change at that level. So the advice of council is to revert back to the 2020 policies. So the policies of committee took these up, and if we were to do that, we'd remove ACR, ACR, ACGA, and ACGB. And those are very procedural anyway, like, those aren't normally in, that wouldn't be normally something that'd be in the School Committee Policy Manual. So there will still be procedures on how to do it, they just won't live in the policy manual. So the other ones, AC, ACA, and ACAB, these are policies that we've had since we redid our policy manual in 2021. So these would revert back. The policy subcommittee did recommend, however, that we, we had included some language from the newer regulations. We added sex stereotypes and sex characteristics to the list of protected classes. So the policy subcommittee is recommending that we continue to leave those in there to make sure that all of our students are protected, and to be consistent with Massachusetts state law, because those are protected classes there. So does anyone have any questions?
Just the new policies, as it's been with the state regulations, have we had the, do our attorneys need to look this over, or are they all, are they good? Because they came from MASC, I'm assuming.
Yeah, they came through MASC, and Ally's been in touch with Sarah Spatafor as well. So and she, after we vote, she was going to have her take a final read through to make sure all the dots, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so.
And then, so just to clarify, so the changes that we're making are reverting back to previous administrations' Title IX rules, but we have our own policies that will maintain the protections that we have locally.
It's just adding those protected classes into what we had in existence.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to remove policy ACR, policy ACR, policy ACGA, and policy ACGB.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I will make a motion to revert policies AC, ACA, and ACAB back to the May 2021 policies, but include the protected language of sex stereotypes and sex characteristics in the protected classes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next group we have are the student safety policies. So that's EEAA, ECAF, and the Animals in School policy, which is new. So EEAA is walkers and riders, and the changes here are to make sure that, to bring it in line with our discussion with adding the bus fees. So it's, our policy is consistent with what we're doing. You can see those changes there. Yep.
The policy, sorry, ECAF, the sentence in the fifth paragraph we talked about the last meeting, still includes staff, which violates the contract, I believe.
No, we haven't gotten there, we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong policy.
Yes, this is just walkers and riders. There's less.
Okay. Hold that back for the next.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, they're different. Any other questions on this one? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the amended EEAA walkers and riders policy.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, ECAF. So this one, reviewed in conjunction with the Police Department. The Police Chief came to our meeting, and we, so there was one suggestion to allow for reviewing of live feed, only in an emergency situation. Sometimes the police would need to see that. And then the other, so that was for the MOU, which, sorry, we're not talking about tonight, so I'm not sure what's here. And then the other one was the paragraph that you mentioned and the suggestion, and it's in here, it's redlined. So students or staff identified in security cameras in violation of the committee's qualities, we're, the proposal is to change it to may be subject to disciplinary action to make sure it's consistent with the contract.
Is that consistent with the contract? Because I thought it, was it, I don't think it may with staff.
It may be under certain circumstances, remember, so like, safety and all that.
It's been a while.
But the way, it's prescriptive, the way it was forwarded before, so you had to prosecute, and that would have violated, so. And then the other, yep, so that was the big change there. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve policy EC, the changes to policy ECAF, security camera.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Okay. Okay, last one in the section is IMG, Animals in School, and then IMGA, which is a new policy. So this is just, MASC, it looks like, broke up the Animals in School to carve out a policy for service animals, as opposed to, you know, one, some that might come in for a science class or for some other reason. Does anyone have any questions on this one? Okay, I'll make a motion to amend policy IMG, Animals in School.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to add policy IMGA, Service Animals in Schools.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last batch.
Okay. Doing great.
Other policies. So there are three here. We'll start with KHBA, advertising in the schools. And these changes came in conjunction with a meeting with the PTOs, and to talk about fundraising. So there's some language. Oh, sorry, this is the wrong one. Yeah, so this is, this allows the superintendent to approve advertisements that relate to fundraising. Any questions?
Sorry. Does the superintendent want to designate me in this?
Designate me?
Sure, yeah. Like, there might be a time that...
Do we want to designate me?
Sure, I mean, I guess that opens flexibility.
More flexibility for you.
Not that I take vacation, but if I did, it'd be helpful to have someone that could approve it. Thank you, good idea.
Okay.
Is that good with everyone? Yep. Okay, I will make a motion to approve changes to policy KHBA, advertising in the schools with the addition of superintendent or designate me.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so JJE, this is the Student Fundraising Activities. This is the one, we got input from the PTOs, and adding the language, "The committee further recognizes that families have different resources. Those differences should, as much as possible, not be highlighted by school activities, including fundraising." And this also adds or designate me for the superintendent. Any questions on this one? I'll make a motion to accept changes to policy JJE, Student Fundraising Activities.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, use of electronic messaging by the School Committee members. This is just chammed, it's removing some obsolete language, and then updated the cross-reference. Any questions? I'll make a motion to accept changes to policy BHE, Use of Electronic Messaging by the School Committee Members.
I will second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right, moving on to New Business. Seven point one, to discuss the 2025, 2026 school year calendar and act as appropriate.
Terrific, so this year, really want to thank Erica Pollard, who took on the calendar with a fresh eye. So we did have some feedback from students this year that some of the cultural and religious holidays, because we have to consult two different documents, we really want to ensure that we are highlighting those days on a single document. So teachers, students, and everyone is aware when religious holidays and other cultural holidays of significance are taking place. So there's an extra sensitivity and awareness of students' needs during that time. And so Erica, in consultation with some of our students groups and in consultation with the H E A, did somewhat significantly reformat the calendar this year and highlighted in particular some of those religious holidays on the calendar. And I will let Erica take it from here and just wanted to acknowledge all of the research that she did. She did a lot of benchmarking with area districts. We stole a lot of great ideas from a lot of different places and we'll let Erica share from there.
Yeah, thank you. It ended up actually being a really interesting process to look at what other districts do, particularly in regard to religious holidays and observances, and take some feedback from, or I take some inspiration from some of those schools. You'll notice that on the front page of the calendar, there are now asterisks. And the asterisks connect to religious holidays and observances that are listed on the back. And I wanted to have it right there on the first calendar so that every time you look at it, you'll be reminded if there's an asterisk, there's something that you should pay attention to here. Obviously, I could not have connected every single religious holiday that anyone ever celebrates. So I went with the list that you'll find on the back, which you'll note, we have described as a non-exhaustive list of holidays that may or may not be celebrated by people in our community. I imagine there's probably someone in our community who celebrates all of these, including some more specific language around how holiday observances are meant to be handled in the school. We wanted to be really explicit and upfront about the fact that there is no penalty for missing school for religious observance. It does say that in the handbooks, but we wanted to say it again. And to outline that students will be provided a reasonable amount of time, typically up to one week, to make up assignments, assessments, and classwork at a mutually agreed upon time with their teacher. There actually was not a lot of language about that that was specific existing in our handbooks. And we landed on typically up to a week, largely so that we could be sure it included a weekend, particularly for our high school students. Trying to catch up on a missed day during a school week is very difficult. So we thought that if a weekend is included, they should be able to catch up. And then I included the starting and dismissal times on this document because I keep forgetting what they are and thought it would be handy to have them all in one place.
Thank you.
I'm probably not the only person.
This is great.
Yeah, it is great, yeah.
This was something that had come up in the last Student Advisory Council meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, so this is very timely.
And grateful to the students who did provide some input early in the process. And we went through several iterative rounds with them and I think landed in a good place.
Anyone listening, first day of school, September 2nd.
Yep. What about the, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So I just want, it makes sense mostly. I just want to understand. So I totally get why we're putting religious and cultural holidays where there is school happening on this list. And we have some where school's not happening, for instance, Christmas.
I realized as I was describing this that I think I have made a mistake. Because I wrote that the asterisk says that school is in session, but that is not necessarily true.
And would it be easier just to, just, I mean, to me, the real value in this list down below is to articulate for those when you're going to have school. Because I also was like, oh, isn't Martin Luther King a cultural holiday? Why isn't that on this list? I just Googled it, AI says it is. I don't know if that's actually, I don't know what the definition of a cultural holiday is. So I don't know. Again, I know this probably doesn't really matter, but.
One wondering I have, though, because the holidays change so wildly from year to year, one year, the first day of Ramadan might fall over February vacation. The next year, it might not. So that's the only tricky thing is that the holidays that land on a school day themselves would change from year to year. So I do, I do think we could, you know, kind of go back and forth on that. But certainly littered with asterisks.
There are a lot of them.
Is confusing in its own way, but some of the holidays do shift.
Hopefully no one will show up for school on December 22nd.
Well, I think I'll go in and I can edit the footnote to say, school is in session unless otherwise indicated. Because it is indicated in other ways if school is closed.
And are, are there any election days? And are they included on here?
So Carol Falvey already reached out for the 26, 27 school year, but did not note anything for this, this coming year. But 26, 27, we actually do have a rough draft of the 26, 27 calendar to make sure that we don't forget that. So appreciate Carol Falvey, if you're listening, thank you for that early warning. We appreciate it.
And then does this get published? I've actually gotten quite a few questions on, like, time of my vacations. When is this going to be out? Is this like we vote?
Soon as you vote on it, yep.
Yep, we'll get it on the, on the website as soon as possible.
And we'll also send it out through principal newsletters this, this week.
I have just made that very quick update and I will drop that revised version right in the folder. Sorry about that.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Given the number of questions out in the community, are we ready to vote tonight or?
I think we should.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to vote on the 2025, 2026 school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, seven point two, to discuss the annual town warrant report and act as appropriate. This is due.
Today.
So, yeah, Carrie will give us an update.
Yes, so in a year of first, this is my first time sharing the report of the school committee for the town warrant. And there are no surprises in this document in terms of what we highlighted. So we highlighted elements of the strategic plan that we really doubled down on this year, most notably the portrait of a learner. That was one key piece of the strategic plan that we had not yet made progress on. And so did highlight that. We continue, obviously, to work on M T S S, to work on both the academic and social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all students, and continue to work on having a high quality and aligned curriculum with the facility structures and climate needed to support a safe and supportive school environment. Also included a significant section in here on the celebration of opening the new foster school and made sure to thank the community in that for all of their support for that project, including the 2017 Building Project Committee. I did also in the report, highlight some community partnerships, the many partners that do work on behalf of students, including Hangham Education Foundation and our Building Thinking Classrooms Initiative that we'll continue to build on over the next several years. Noted a thanks to the Hangham Sports Partnership for their construction of the dock, the new wellness center at Hangham High that we hope will be completed in June of 2025. I shared an outline of our F Y 26 proposed budget, putting it in the context of what our peer districts are also experiencing. So it has been a lean year and a challenging year, not only for Hangham, but also area peers with rising costs, as we've discussed, including utilities, salaries, and contracts. We have rising special education costs and so on, so we've kind of outlined that. In the report, I did note the parameters of the three and a half percent M O U for the, that drove our budget this year. Explained a little bit about the carve out for out of district and other special education costs. Made a note about some of our needs with regard to facilities, with regard to the roof repair and replacement. And again, just acknowledged all of the overwhelming support that we have from the community for which we're grateful.
Just thinking of things that might be in here that aren't, thinking of the annual report as being not from our fiscal year, but from town meeting to town meeting. I'm wondering if we want anything in around, if we settled contracts with all units of the H E A.
Certainly could add.
As an addition. Last year's major accomplishment.
Sure. Good point, I wasn't thinking of that. I was thinking of kind of start of the year, but.
It just, it all happened after.
That's a really great point. So I'm happy to include that under community part, between community partnerships and proposed budget or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe proposed budget.
Under.
Under the budget?
Under the budget.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Great. I had two suggestions, minor. So for community partnerships, would you mind spelling out C P A C?
Certainly, thank you, you're my acronym queen. I appreciate that.
And then the other thing, every time it references special education costs, I was wondering if we could include the words legally required in front of that.
Great idea, yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Legally and morally.
Since you're going to make edits, I know this is nitpicky, but the names and the order of the names, they just don't make sense to me. There's not, it's not an alphabetical order either way or by year.
I cut, cut and pasted it from last year and moved people around. But I, but we can certainly go, so alphabet.
I don't know if we did alphabetically or is it by year? Do you know if we do it by who's up next?
I think.
For the chairs, vice chair and secretary, but then.
And then beyond that alphabetical. I can certainly do that, yep, absolutely.
I think they just went alphabetically.
After the top three.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Slater, you are noted on there as a member of the committee, so.
I will make a motion to approve the 2025 report of the school committee that will be included in the 2025 town warrant with the additional comments related to contract negotiations, C P A C, the legally required words for special education, and then alphabetizing four names at the end.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much for pulling that together.
Sure.
All right. Okay, so seven point three, to discuss community service requirement and act as appropriate. I know that we've got John Buckey here as well. I'm not sure who wants to take that one.
Sure, yeah, John and Erica collaborated on this, but did just want to provide some historical context on this, where John is new to the district, wanted to just share a little bit of the history last year. And so there was very much a desire amongst the high school community to center community service as a community value, highlight opportunities for students for service earlier in their high school years and to give them exposure to all of the different opportunities that are available. But we did engage in a pilot this year to see how best to approach community service. And so John and Erica Pollard worked with Erica Shinney, our community service coordinator, to collect some data on the pilot this year. And I'll let John take the podium and he and Erica can kind of tag team on this.
Good evening. So I'm new to the conversation in Hangham about community service requirements, but I'm not new to districts grappling with whether to have a community service requirement or not. Been in two different schools as a high school principal. One went with a community service requirement as a graduation requirement and the other didn't. And I think that it is very community specific when you look at that. I want to give props to Erica Shinney. She has done an amazing job of flying the plane as it's being built or building the plane as it's being flown because I think she's gotten some feedback about the community service requirement. So what we did, spoiler alert, Michelle already has this information. Our school council did a survey, a quick six-question survey to our freshmen that are participating in the pilot. We had robust response, about 93% of the freshman class responded to the survey. And about two-thirds of our students, you have much of this information in the memo from me, but about two-thirds of our students reported, we're going to do community service, whether it's a graduation requirement or not, which I think speaks volumes to Hangham. When asked if you haven't done any community service, 50% said time. And I think that that's something that I have observed here is our students are stretched very thin, are super engaged in a lot of different things. And I think adding a community service requirement as a graduation requirement would be just another thing for our students. And when we, so where is the Solomon? How do we find a happy medium? And so that's what you have in the memo from me, is that it is, won't be a requirement, but it will be an opportunity for the two-thirds of students that are doing community service anyway to get a recognition and then to be able to put that on their transcript. Did a lot of research with our South Shore colleagues and we're not alone in not having a community service requirement. Many of our neighbors do not. And those that do have wildly different, one has a 10-hour requirement as a graduation requirement. One has a 60, which I'm glad we're all seated, except for me, down from 140. The graduation requirement was 140 and they've whittled it back to 60. So I really do think that's sweet spot for us in looking at communities that do have a requirement for our commendation for that to be 40 hours. I'm happy to take questions or arrows.
What town is that? What town is that?
I don't want to out another community.
I'm just reading the memo, just to clarify and question. There's the 40 hours is completed anytime. So whether it's distributed over four years or happens during spring break of habitats for humanity, it's.
For, for them to get it on their transcript, it would need to be done by the culmination of their junior year.
But it could all, but it could all be done the summer of freshman year.
Yes, absolutely, yes. Good question.
Yeah, I just want to add some context from the Student Advisory Committee meeting that I attended. It was really helpful to talk to the kids on that. Now, full disclosure, none of them were freshmen, so this doesn't apply to them. But they were very positive about it. And that's one thing I think we should think about. There were some stories about kids who did community service because of this pilot program and ended up loving it and did a lot more volunteerism, which was the goal, I think, when we first did that. And so I'd just be mindful of that. If, if this is geared towards the two-thirds of students who were going to do it anyway, are we really accomplishing that goal? Especially in, thinking about it right now, we talked about it a little bit with the building committee earlier too. It's harder to get people to volunteer. It's not as valued. It just, society is at large and I don't know. I think if we're going to prioritize it, I don't know. I would, I would hate to see, I would like to see it go forward as a pilot. I know the two things that you, or not as a pilot, as a, as a requirement, the two things that you had mentioned there, the youth risk behavior survey. The other piece of that, though, is that community engagement is a protective factor. And I looked at the results from last year, the ninth graders, I think 43% of them did community service. And it went up to, it was like 67, or it was higher for the high school, 67 for, for grade 11. And so that's really encouraging. And if we want to increase that, I think we want to try to get it towards students who wouldn't just do it anyway. So just in looking at that. And then the equity piece too, that was the one that gave me the most pause is the students who have, they have extra jobs or they have people they need to take care of at home. they have extra jobs or they have people they need to take care of at home. But I feel like there's got to be a way around that. It's, it's the first year. I feel like we could put something in place that would preserve the, the requirement, but if there were some kind of circumstances you could take care of those students. So I don't know, that's just where I was on it, but, but thank you for putting this together.
I do think that there's an opportunity for the third that we're not doing community service to be incentivized by the proposal that we're putting forward.
You think it would?
I do.
It seems very similar to the, well, not very similar, but same idea behind GCP.
Similar, very similar.
Which has a lot of participation, if I recall.
And I do think it's important just to clarify that we're keeping the infrastructure, so keeping.
Yeah.
Erica Shinney. And I do think we have opportunities through freshman advisory to front and center service early on, really highlighting those opportunities. And it is already a norm of many, and I think Slater could probably speak to this, of our clubs and activities to integrate service elements. And so given that we have 80% participation rate in athletics, those teams are all engaging in some community service. Our various other clubs, Jacqueline can speak to, the green team, which is all about service, student council is all about service. So I do think that students have many opportunities and entry points. And so just continuing to center it early and often as a community norm.
Yeah, can I add, going off of that point is when you, I just would ask if someone could just review the, I don't want to call them rules, but the criteria for what counts as for community service. Because I feel like some of it, it's, it's very strict in my opinion, especially when you compare it to rules for National Honor Society. I feel like there's some things that the hours count for National Honor Society. They don't count for this pilot program that we did this year. And I think some of it was related, as Katie mentioned, for sports. Anything that is related to sports, it wouldn't be counted according to the regulations that are in that list. So just maybe something to have a conversation, go over it, just to kind of make sure it lines up with what the kids are doing. I wouldn't want kids to be volunteering and then to look at this list and realize that their hours didn't count.
For sure.
That was some feedback from the students too, because there was a lot of confusion about what counts and can you overlap and things like that.
Matt and Slater.
I'm not sure all sports unless I'm getting bad information.
It was like some, it was some sports if it was related. I mean, and sometimes I know it's really fun reason, which I get, but it's, it was confusing, I thought.
Agreed, which is, you know, that's, which is fine. That's something to build on. It's a first year.
Absolutely.
I had a couple of questions. So, I mean, I support this. I was definitely concerned about a graduation requirement last year. And this doesn't change my mind. I'm assuming the recommendation is only for, so current sophomores and up would not be offered the ability or they would be?
No, I think it would take effect immediately.
So I just think logistically, we need to think through what, what does that mean? Because the sophomores haven't been, it might be, I, I support that, but I think there's, like, right now, we have information on the freshmen, sophomores and juniors, I mean, and even juniors, like, would we consider them to get this? I just think we need to think through that a little bit.
That's a good point. Given the junior awards is coming up very quickly, that, that would be a conversation with Erica.
I meant starting next year, but I'll work with Erica on the logistics on that.
Whether sophomores are included or not. Because I, I actually do think this will be an incentive for a lot of people. And I could see juniors, many juniors being like, okay, well, I've actually done 40 hours. Can I just input it and get, get this on my transcript? I would ask that question. I am curious on the 40, so we've set the expectation for the current freshman, you're going to do 10 hours was the pilot with the expectation that, you know, it could be 40 hours. I had sort of understood that to be through senior year, 10 hours a year. Maybe that's my own misunderstanding, but I guess I would ask, did I misunderstand that? Or are we changing the expectations now to say, okay, we asked you to do 10 this year. Now we're saying you have to do 15 the next two years. Might be okay, but it is a different set of expectations, I think, than what we had set. So I guess I would just.
Yeah, I think you understood it right, but I'll let you.
Yeah, so I, I can let Erica and John speak to that, but we were worried about having kind of a bifurcated number of 30 if you hit it by junior year, 40 if you hit it by senior year, but I'll let you speak to that.
And there's also just an added layer of complication in terms of many students will be motivated to do this, to get this on their college applications. And if it's not done by the end of your junior year, then it's not particularly helpful for your college application. Like it's sort of a, it's too late to get it on your transcript if you do it much later. And I think that that's part of the thought process for ending it at that point.
So I'm okay with that. Then I just would question, again, we've set this at 10 for the first year and kind of set that as the baseline. We might be okay with it, but should it just be 10 every year and a 30 hour requirement?
Can I ask a question? How, how many require, how many hours are required for the National Honor Society? 16? Wait, for the whole school year? For the whole four years? Oh, only 16? Okay, wow.
Well, but most students don't, aren't accepted to the Honor Society until their junior year.
Okay.
That's coming up, by the way.
Yes. So if you're a junior, you're getting accepted now. So it's anything from now before, from your freshman year to now. So it's two and a half years.
Okay.
Slater.
So Tony went and talked to a lot of the teachers who run these programs. And from my understanding was that with the overall graduation requirement, a lot of those teachers were thinking about rolling back some of those restrictions on like whether you can get into a club or not. So it's like one more, like one universal, like rule that like you just do it for the, for the grade and then you don't have to do it for the, the clubs is what my understanding was for it. I, I think that it is going to be more motivating to have the requirement, and that's just my opinion. I can see the value in like a, something that goes through your transcript. But I think if that were the direction that would be taken, need to be like clear enough and something like big enough where you're going to get enough students to go and do it and make it worthwhile to even have all this infrastructure for volunteering. Because if you cut down the requirement and then we go from the 60% who are going to do it anyways, or said they're going to do anyways, like, I don't know, it just seems like a lot of students from my mind would not do it and would not go after this like one additional thing. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
That's good.
Nobody, I think Jacqueline had her.
Jacqueline, yeah. Is the staff member organizing this currently, tracking the sophomores and juniors?
Nope.
So this is more, you just increase the workload?
Well, not necessarily, because in this format, not everybody would be doing it. Right? So like right now, she's tracking for every ninth grader, but I don't assume that every student, grades nine through 11 would participate in this, if that makes sense. But it is hard to predict how much more or less that might be.
I would say there'll be a little bit less on the chasing aspect too. So currently she's trying to track down every freshman. This will be a more passive process where the students will complete a Google form. If they don't complete the form, they don't get the commendation. So I think it will put a little bit more of the ownership on the students. And do you think it would be roughly the same amount of work when it comes to outlining the opportunities that are available and socializing it and messaging?
Do we still have grant funding for the, for the, the stipend? Is that still in the works?
I'm not sure that it was grant funded.
It was.
Okay.
BTO. The BTO funded. Let's work that.
Yep.
Jacqueline has another question. Jacqueline has another question.
Oh, yeah.
Just in casual conversations, I know this has been real challenging. So I've been worried about it being a bit more challenging, it's difficult to be able to staff.
Challenging in what way? Sorry.
I think the chasing down.
The chasing down, got it.
Yeah, and I, I know, not to compare the two, but I know with National Honor Society, it's, the students have to email for every activity, for every, and then they have to get an email back. And it can't be a letter, it's all through email. And I can only imagine, just from the teacher's perspective, how much work that is too, to kind of recall back, make sure they get their emails back for the students. And I'm just, I understand how that workload can add up.
I mean, my, my own thoughts on this, it, I've had lots of great discussions on, and I appreciate Slater, the student feedback. I think it's, and it is, you know, it, it's something that we, we strive for in the community and we're all volunteers and it's great. I struggle with the fact that we're constantly adding to the kids' plates and we're not taking anything away. And I also struggle with that we live in a privileged community, but not necessarily everybody's privileged enough to have the access to get to volunteer activities. It requires, as a freshman sophomore at least, requires a parent or somebody to take them to these activities. And that's a privileged thought that everybody's going to have the, the ability to do that. So, and you know, I do struggle with this one. I, I love that it's, it's something that the structure is set up and that, that it gives the, the kids something to get on their transcript. I think that's all great. And, you know, hopefully they're motivated enough to, to do that. So it's, I'm glad that this is the recommendation. I, I agree with it.
But yeah, I guess we'll see how it feels.
Yeah, I think we can be really creative in ways to incentivize people. I mean, we can, this doesn't seem like a set of policies right now. There seems to be like policies that need to be created around this about how this would operate that I'm not sure we're getting at in the discussion tonight. But I think there are certainly, maybe, maybe just maybe people who do their community service get first crack at the far parking lot. Maybe they get early prom tickets. I don't know. There are all sorts of creative. Maybe we hold a dinner for people every year and it's similar to the sports banquet. There, we can really think outside of the box to incentivize people. I think in the world we live in, I, by requiring community service, which is probably different from my opinion a couple of years ago when we talked about this, is I wonder if some kids are learning the opposite message of this is something that I never want to participate in my life because my school's forcing me to do it. So I worry, I worry about that message, but I'm speaking to someone who, the community service I did in high school is a direct path through the career that I've had. So, and probably would not be on the career path that I'm on if I didn't do that community service in high school. So I do think it's really important and I want to support it full throatedly with, and think really, and I guess why I'm sort of talking about policies around it is I think there's a lot of creative work that can be done maybe on a school by school level about how we can incentivize community service.
I will say, when we rolled out the seal of biliteracy, kids got really excited about having pins to wear at graduation.
Yes.
I like the idea of a cord.
Cords and the pins are very exciting.
It's up to the teacher to come up with a creative far lot.
I just want to talk about the policy more.
Maybe the homecoming dance tickets that, that are the incentive. You reminded me though of something about this. I, I think for me, a lot of things that jumped out was that, you know, 56% of the students said that they did not think this should be a graduation requirement. And when we had met with Student Advisory Council a couple of weeks ago, what resonated with me was something that Tony had said, when he had said that he thought that the requirement at least got kids who might not even have thought about community service to think about community service. I think this does the same thing though, because now it puts the idea into their head. And the one thing that I was thinking about was a lot was about the exceptions, like, oh, we could, you know, we could put exceptions in so kids don't have to do it. And then after the Unity Council, the Unity Council last week had a dinner with a motivational speaker, this woman, Kim Anthony, with an incredible story. But part of her story was she was a gymnast. She came from a very poor family and they, in order for her to be able to afford the gymnastics lessons, she and her mother had to stay after, I forget, to leave because she had to go to AdCom. The, her and her mother had to stay after and clean the gym. And she would not stay, you know, she wouldn't get home until 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night sometimes. And her other teammates didn't have to do that. So they could go home and they could do their homework and get their things done. And so after the presentation, I was talking to her about this. And I said, see, it's interesting to me because that's what I'm worried about. I said, those kids who do have to do things like that after school. And then another parent was standing there and they said, yeah, but they could get an exception. And she said, and once again, I feel othered. Like, once again, I'm not having to do the same thing that other people are having to do. And it just feels, it's another way that I feel like I'm different and it's pointing that out. And that, for me, was when I was like, okay, I think I like this incentive for, you know, commendation versus making it a requirement.
And one other thing, I've also heard that for college applications, while they like to see volunteering, if it's required by the school, I think that kind of takes away from the students who are doing it on their own terms.
I did hear that feedback from friends who are in college admissions that when it comes to service, they want to see evidence of intrinsic motivation. So by having the requirement, that's kind of an extragenic motivator, it does kind of take away from that intrinsic.
But a lot of students go above and beyond the 40 hours that we're talking about. So that's evidence of intrinsic motivation. And they might gain it from, you know, from the requirements.
Definitely don't put the far lot on the. On the transcript.
My question is, is this something that we do vote on if it's not a requirement?
I don't think so. I think we had to vote on it before because it was going to be a requirement, but if it's not a requirement, I don't know if we.
Are you unvoted?
Don't renew the pilot.
They voted for the pilot.
Do you have to renew, update the program of studies?
Yes.
Right, so we'll have to come back to you with the, with the actual program of studies, I assume, with that.
So the program of studies says that the community service requirement will be determined by the school committee. So I think we can add, we can either edit the document itself or we can give it a little addendum.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
I like an addendum.
Formatting that way.
So would it be helpful for us to approve this program tonight to be included as the addendum? Or do you want to?
I don't know if we need all the details worked out before we, it seems like this is an idea more than a specific proposal.
Yeah, so I think if, if it is not a requirement, we, there's no need to include it in the program of studies. So like global citizenship requirements are not currently included in, aren't they?
A description of the program is in the program of studies. So we could add a description of this program in the program of studies. We could also call this a pilot for next year and then add it the following year.
I, I do think you need to think through a little bit more for the sophomores and juniors. Like I think that needs to be clear to people because again, and relatively, it sounds like juniors are off the table right now. But that, you know, if it's updated and needs to be clear, this is only for classes, you know, whatever it is, 27 and up or 28 and up. And then sophomores, I do think that does add, which I think it could be a good thing, but it adds a level of, I don't know, like they have to go back and, I don't know, it just could create a lot of questions, I guess. Like they haven't had any sort of option.
Sure.
To date. I don't love not doing it for them, like because it disincentivizes in some ways, but I just think think through and make sure it's not going to create a lot of additional questions from the entire sophomore class.
Sure, so we certainly.
With only one year, you know, with only one year to get it done.
They have been doing it with the, the honors program already.
For people that are in.
Yes, in that form, yeah, exactly. Exactly. But I'm saying, I'm just thinking that most people who are trying to do that would be the same people, probably some of the people, right?
I don't know. National Honor Society has a lot of other things that are required for admission other than community service. So there'll probably be some overlap, but I wouldn't say those are exclusive.
Can you double dip with the Honor Society?
I think so. Can I vote just to make it clear to Matt's point that?
I don't, I don't have a point of view on what.
No, I, yeah, I know, but just to make sure that everybody who's done the pilot knows what.
Well, I think.
That's not a requirement. Vote for it to not be a requirement.
Definitely support that. And then I separately think it's just important to have clear, like, you know, agreement on what class does it start with?
Does it sound like we have consensus on? Right, graduation.
I'm not sure if we have consensus, but I think.
No.
We have views.
Yeah, but, yeah. So for a global citizen, was that approved by the school? Like, do we need to approve that? Not, not, but approve this program? Was that, would you know if global, global GCP was approved by the school committee?
We have not. We have not, I don't believe that any of the pathways programs at the high school have been approved by the school committee.
Okay.
Would have been approved.
There's a new business pathway. Did you all approve that?
No, I mean, that just happened, so, no, I think that none of them have been.
Okay.
Approved by the school committee.
Okay.
And I, I mean, in talking, I think Matt and I have similar but different concerns. You're, that's our concern with the nuts and bolts and the fairness of it. And I'm more, I want before I say, okay, there's no requirement. I want to see what the incentives are and what type of outside of the box thing. It's sort of that description you were talking about in the program of study. And I don't know if that would be best dealt with going off to a subcommittee. I think educational programming could take it. We've done the other.
I think that's too procedural.
That's more of a procedure than a policy. Yep, that would be more.
Okay. I guess I'd like to see that. I'm, I'd be more comfortable once I see that we actually are really being full-throated with our support of the.
I think to Carrie's point, we didn't vote on the other programs of, so it's, is it within our wheelhouse to have a say on that because it is procedural?
Well, no, I kind of see, I see what you're saying, though, because you, you'd be comfortable voting against a graduation requirement if you knew that there was something robust in place.
Yes.
Is it?
Yes, and it sounds like there will be something. I'm not doubting that there will be something robust in place. I'm just.
So if there's nothing, if there's no, if there's nothing that's robust, are you not willing to remove the graduation requirement?
Well, there's not a requirement right now. This is only a.
A pilot, right.
Yeah.
And would I say scrap the pilot if there wasn't the commendation? I forget what the wording is, but is that what you're asking? I don't know, right now, like, I think.
So my wondering is, I do think a part of what will make this live is, for example, centering this in our freshman advisories and so on. I don't know that we would necessarily be outlining the approach in that level of detail for the school committee. And so I think that's what's going to make it live is, you know, leading with it early and often in freshman orientation and freshman advisories to really promote this. So I do think a big piece of this initiative was to get students to know about community service offerings sooner. And so I do think that those kinds of programming things wouldn't necessarily be living in the land of policy. But that, that's how we'll make, make this live.
All right. Somebody want to proceed? Somebody want to make a motion? Do you want to move forward?
I mean, I pers- I don't know, understand how to make motions, as you know. I personally am, am not going to change my mind. I am going to vote, I would vote that we should not have it as a graduation requirement, sort of, no matter, it's all black and white. But like, I can't imagine the next couple of conversations would change my mind on that. So I personally am ready to move.
I am not moving forward. Okay. Do either one of you want to make a motion?
I'm just trying to think what the motion is.
Right.
It is weird because it's not a requirement, right? So we're not voting to rescind the, I think we're, I think we're voting to end the pilot.
Right, so vote, vote us to end the pilot and replace it with a program that offers a commendation for.
No, we're not even voting on this program. It's not.
Right.
Okay. We're not voting, so we're just voting to.
End the pilot program. That community service won't be a graduation requirement.
Can we continue the pilot but remove the requirement? That way the infrastructure is guaranteed to remain? Could we, part of the pilot was having the infrastructure and the website and the coordinator.
Yep.
Can we continue the pilot but with the addendum that it removes the graduation requirement? Is that, is that a way of splitting the, splitting the hair or?
The only, the only. The memo, because they memo recommends it.
The pilot program was different than this. The pilot program was ten, ten per year up till through senior year. This is.
How about?
Forty until June, end of junior year. So it's, so it wouldn't, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be an extension of the pilot program because it's different.
Yeah.
How about, how about approving the proposed changes as outlined in the memo?
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the graduation.
Nope. Sorry. All right, so, obviously, how about, I'll move, I'll move to end the pilot program for a potential graduation requirement of community service and replace this with the proposed changes to community service as outlined in this memo.
I will happily second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
No. Would you like to be recorded? Yes, I would.
For AdCom colleagues.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all the work you did around this.
And thank you to everyone who participated in the pilot this year.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a good thing to do.
So I'm, so I'm sure all those freshmen are watching the school committee.
This counts as, this counts as community. This should count as community service, like, anything. Everyone gets at least one hour.
Actually, for the Boy Scouts, it is a.
That's right.
That's right. Okay, seven point four to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. I didn't see anything. Or a seven point five to approve surplus and, okay, so we don't have seven point four or seven point five, so we're moving right along. Item eight, subcommittee and project reports and warrants signed.
I don't have any updates.
The best project report is a week from Wednesday, sponsored by Snap, is the Pizza Palooza. Who, if you don't know what that is, it's pizza makers from all across the South Shore. Come and you buy a ticket. I think it's, I forget how much it is. I don't want to say in a meeting, but it's, because I'll be wrong. But a very, very reasonable price. You go and can sample pizza from various establishments from all over the South Shore. It's a really fun time and it supports the Special Needs Athletic Partnership.
Favorite nights.
Yeah.
It's really fun, it's wonderful. And so we'll be at Hingham High School on Wednesday, April 2nd.
Thank you.
The Hingham Middle School Council meeting is Monday, March 31st. Jen and I took part in this first strategic plan meeting on March 11th. It was great. Great group of people and learned a lot just from doing that. And that's it.
School Building Committee met last Wednesday. We had a lot to talk about with playgrounds and kind of wrapping up and how much time is left for work on, for this committee, probably another year? Is that what we figured, to do the abatement and wrap up and do the closeout memos and payments and all that? So that work, it's not done yet. Student Advisory Council met once, somewhere, sometime in between these two meetings, in the last two weeks. It was a great discussion. We talked about a lot of it already, the community service. We talked about the calendar. There was, the calendar, I think, was great because one of the things that the students mentioned was the reminding staff about the, you know, make up time and give, being given enough time for students to make up work when they're out on religious holidays. And then some changes that the Student Advisory Council wants to make to get more student input next year, working a little bit more with STUCO. So I think we'll have some good, good things out of that. That's it.
Just I attended the South School Council today, which talked a little bit about virtue of a graduate and that there are warrants in the packet.
I don't have anything, but I guess, given how quick this meeting has gone, it's a nice reprieve from all the other meetings that we're having to attend or possibly attend. We do have a few more this week. AdCom is talking about the budget and the warrants for the school Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. So there are agendas to attend and participate if anybody's available. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is April 7th. And that's the last meeting before town meeting, which is crazy.
Which is Monday, April 28th.
Monday, April 28th.
Please attend.
Sorry, I thought it was Wednesday. I'm confused.
Of Wednesday, town meeting?
I thought it was Wednesday, so I, I don't know why.
I think there's a warrant article to do it on Saturdays next year.
Yes.
That's what I'll be saying.
All right, anything else under forty-eight hours?
All right, so we have an executive session that we will adjourn to and not return.
I will make a motion to adjourn into executive session, not to return. Open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on March 10th, 2025, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So declare.
And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation and act as appropriate as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So declare.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, Matt?
Tim?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
I'm an eyesight. We're done.
Thank you.